Morning, everyone. The date is Tuesday, July 12, 2022. The time is now nine o'clock. This is a regular board meeting of the Kings County Board of Supervisors. We do continue to deal with COVID regulations, so this meeting is on the web, WebEx. So whether you're joining us by way of computer or teleconferencing, we thank you for joining us through that format. Please use the raise your hand or get someone's attention if you want to address the board under unscheduled. For those members in the audience who have filled out a speaker card, they will be taken in order, received by the clerk, and then we'll take online speakers as they appear in the WebEx program. And so thank you very much for complying with those directives as well. Each vote today will be verbal or voice vote so that members of the public can hear how each board member has voted. After we've had a motion and a second regarding each item, the vote will then be taken by district. So with that, in order to establish quorum, I'm going to ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Joe Nevs.
Here.
Richard Valley.
Here.
Doug Verboen.
Here.
Craig Peterson.
Here.
Richard Fagundes.
Here. Good. Let the record show all members present, so we have established a quorum. We will be able to conduct business. If I can ask you all now to please rise as we invite Pastor Arthur Fox from New Orthodox Presbyterian Church to deliver the invocation this morning. Good morning. Thank you for being here.
Thank you, sir. I'm going to read from Isaiah, chapter 45, verses 22 through 24. "Look to me and be saved, all you ends of the earth, for I am God, and there is no other. I have sworn by myself, the word has gone out of my mouth in righteousness and shall not return, that to me every knee shall bow, every tongue shall take an oath. He shall say, surely in the Lord I have righteousness and strength; to him shall men come, and all shall be ashamed who are incensed against him." Let's pray. Sovereign Father of all who believe in Jesus, and sovereign Lord of the whole earth, we thank you that we are living in a free country, that we would beseech you, O Lord, for healing, for we are divided as never before in our lifetimes. And there are those in office who are doing things that we do not approve of. And there are those in office who are trying to do a good job, and everyone's being lumped together into one whole. And, Lord, we pray that as your people and as a nation, we would be discerning, and we would encourage those who are doing what is righteous in your sight. But we thank you that we're still here. We do not deserve to be, we confess, for we sin each day, and not a day goes by when we fail to be grateful to you, and some of us fail to trust in your Son for salvation. But we are here to serve you, and we pray that you would forgive our unbelief and our ingratitude. Lord, this board of supervisors is gathered here to serve this county, and we beg you to give grace to these supervisors to do their jobs to your glory and the rest of us, grace to support them by our prayers and our encouragements and our submission. We pray, O Lord, that because this day, that this day you would answer our hearts' desires as long as they accord with yours. And, Lord, please cleanse us from sin and ingratitude, and teach us to know and love your ways, and keep us safe as a community. And we beg you, keep us free as a nation, and deliver us from leaders that do not seek to preserve our beloved country as you gave it to us, and deliver us from those who would seek to destroy this country. And we do remember those suffering in Ukraine, and pray that you remove the Russian army and its leader from Ukraine, and heal that nation. Finally, we ask you to forgive our sins and hear us for Jesus' sake. Amen.
Thanks, Pastor Fox. Please join me in a moment of silence. Ernie Bertena was a part of the county staff for over 41 years, serving in the animal control division from 1952 to 1993. May he rest in peace. Thank you very much. Now join me as we honor America by reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic of this justice, a nation, to the justice of its citizens.
Thank you very much. The next item on the agenda is unscheduled appearances. Any person may directly address the board at this time on any item on the agenda or any item within the subject manager's jurisdiction of this board. Speakers will be limited to two minutes. Madam Clerk, do you have a record of anyone that would like to address the board under unscheduled?
I do not have any written correspondence, but I do have speaker cards. The first one is Rebecca Bell.
Good morning, Rebecca. Thank you for being here.
Good morning. I just wanted to say thank you for helping Mr. Mercer with the Ukraine fundraiser. This is like the all-hands-on-deck, pulling all the stops and kind of, it's a hail mary this week, so we got to turn in our final numbers to the KCC on Sunday. So we still need 20 teams. So unless, I mean, so I just want to say thank you for your support for so far, but like I said, it's just all hands on deck. So I was wondering, in regards to a weak mayor, city council, I know it's, it might be conflict of interest to bring it up. I know with counties, you're responsible for multiple cities, and then you delegate the responsibilities to fall in that category. However, as a citizen, would I have to go to county or the city in order to change it to the city weak mayor to make it a strong mayor? I went to the library to try to find out when Hamford became it, and it just told me who our first mayor was and who our first city council was, but it didn't mention how they were elected. So I wasn't sure when Hamford became to where we stopped voting for our mayor and where it's supposed to be a four-year term, and it just became a, you know, loop-de-loop for one year. So I don't know. It baffles me. Anyway, I also wanted to bring up, do you have anything in regards for senior citizens? These are not, I mean, I'm talking because unfortunately I had a friend that just, her husband just passed away, and she's in a bind because she can't afford to, it's $1,400 for a one-bedroom apartment. And if you get somebody that's on a fixed income or they were the breadwinner, so they're out of a place to stay. So, and I don't know, I'm going to go to try to get her some senior assistance, but does the county have anything for senior living support or anything to help people that are retired? I'm not talking about assisted living. I'm talking independent individuals. Is there some sort of program out there? So that's what I'm bringing up. And also, you know me, I love animals, okay? Anyway, I just, it's more of a final plea to people, whether they're in this room or watching us or watching us later on. If you find an animal and they're well-groomed, they belong to somebody, it's not finder's keepers, okay? You got to check for a chip because there's a family and they're missing, because unfortunately there was a neighbor that kept an animal and they were, yeah, it was a pom-pom. So nobody abandons a pom-pom. So, and so they're devastated. They kind of kept it and they gave it to another family member, so they had to get it back. It's ownership. It's the family member. So, thank you.
All right. Thanks. Yeah, and you might check with the Housing Authority on some of the housing units. So they also have Section 8, if they follow that. They're the ones that do that part of the equation.
Okay, the Housing Authority is here just down the. No, it's at 680 North Irwin.
Yeah. And good luck with that. Thanks.
The next speaker is Mavi Sandoval.
Uh-oh, looks like we're getting tag teamed. It's a tag team. Good morning. Thanks for being here.
Good morning. Thanks. I'd like to thank everyone, you guys here, for letting us to be in front of you guys today and speak on what's going on with our FRC and stuff. First of all, my name is Mavi Sandoval. I am the Kettleman City Foundation President. And also, like you know, I am a 40-plus-year Kettleman City resident. So I've been in Kettleman pretty much all my life. So, and I'd like also to thank everyone that helped me with building out, you know, the application that, you know, assisted me. This is my first time ever doing something like this, so it's, it was, you know, less scary. But, so, there is quite a few stuff that's going on at our FRC and at our hall. We are having, like, leakage, there's the restrooms, it's roofing, there's different stuff, right? And the thing is, when we first, we have started noticing it just recently more, because, to tell you the truth, you know, for the last two years, we weren't really meeting there. We weren't really, you know, people weren't in and out and stuff as they are now again. And so now we are noticing that all this is going on, and we need, you know, to take care of it. We have, you know, also lost a lot of, like, the revenue and stuff, because, you know, there's not as much people doing, like, the quinceañeras and stuff like that, so we're not running our hall as often. Hopefully that will start picking up again, hopefully. But, yeah, so here, Bob.
Okay. So with great appreciation, we were able to get the Kettleman City Community Center, FRC, buildings built back in about 1998. Those buildings, 25 years or so now that's passed, 24, 25 years, they are needing, I'm not going to say they're in disrepair, they're not, but they do need some TLC here. We have some plumbing issues that need addressed. We have some HVAC issues that need addressed. It's still all right to have the kids out there with KCALE and things like that, but we do have a few leaks. And then one of the things that I went over with Jeff Penny this morning is that we have on the roof, the roof's kind of waving to me between when it was designed and built, there were four-foot centers on the trusses on the, in the roof, and now we're having it where it's sagging, the roof is actually sagging between those trusses, and they've caused a couple leaks in the FRC portion of the first building. So we need to address those repairs, and we don't have the funds. I'm coming to you as an FRC member at the moment, and we don't have the funds to do these repairs. That's why we're coming to you, asking this board for the approval of the funds. So we have roof repairs we need to make, we have AC repairs, HVAC we need to make, and then some plumbing. So those are the main things that we need to take care of.
Very good. Thank you. Any questions? Very good. Thanks.
The next speaker is Josh Cunningham.
Morning, Josh. Thanks for being here.
Yeah, good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Josh Cunningham, Assistant Fire Chief, here today to give you a quick situational update on your fire department. Since the last time we saw you, since you guys were in session, 4th of July came, and the fire department's been really busy ever since then. And right after the 4th of July, probably about half an hour after the call stopped, the state called us to join the fight with Master Mutual Aid. Last couple weeks, we've been sending teams all up and down the state. It's been pretty busy. And last night, we got the call to join the fight in Yosemite. So currently, your fire department has 11 personnel. That's one safety officer, one strike team leader, and three Type III engines in Yosemite on the Washburn fire. As of 7:00 this morning, the Washburn fire was 3,221 acres and 25% contained. So we joined the fight. We have some limited resources out. Chief and I don't plan on sending it out anymore and stretching the guise that employees thin. We're going to do what we can do to help. But I want to make sure that everyone's aware that with these people out, we're still staffing your fire department 100% with 23 personnel per day. So if there's any questions, if not, thank you and have a nice day.
Very good. Thanks, Josh. Any questions or comments? Very good. Thanks.
Thank you. And the next speaker is Bobby Henry. I didn't know if he.
They kind of tag teamed it, so. See, no one online, no hands raised, no one getting our attention. Last call for those in chambers. Anyone else?
Supervisor Valley, were you wanting to do yours during unscheduled, or did you want to do it during ARPA?
Comments on the FRC? I'll wait for the agenda. Thanks for asking that, Madam Clerk. All right. With that, we'll close out the unscheduled comments and move on to the next item, which is the reporting out of closed session of both the June 27th as well as the June 28th closed session items. And Sean, you want to report out on those two items?
There were no items to report out from closed session on either of those meetings.
Very good. Thank you very much. The next item is approval of the minutes from the special meeting held on June 27th and the minutes from the regular meeting on June 28th. Have members had an opportunity to review those minutes?
So moved.
Seconded. Moved by Verboen, seconded by Peterson. Thank you very much. Discussion. Hearing are seen none. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley. Doug Verboen. Craig Peterson.
Aye.
Richard Fagundes.
Yes. But the record show the minutes from those two dates stand approved unanimously. Thank you very much. The next item is the consent calendar, and all items under the consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be acted by one motion. The request of any board member, any item may be removed and made part of the regular agenda. The item A from behavioral health item has been pulled and will return at a, at a date in the future. Item under, item D from public health, item 2A has been pulled as well and will return later. And then item F, there is just a signature change needed on that. So with the two items being pulled, item A and item D to A, and then a adjustment to item F.
If there are no questions or comments, I'll move the consent counter as adjusted. Second.
Moved by Verboen, seconded by Valley. Discussion. Hearing are seen none. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
Aye.
Doug Verboen.
Yes.
Craig Peterson.
Aye.
Richard Fagundes.
Yes. Let the record show the consent calendar stand approved as amended. Thank you very much. So now we'll move on to regular agenda items. First regular agenda item comes from the Department of Finance, considering an ordinance on booking fees. Rob, good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Rob Knutson with the Department of Finance. As you may recall, I was before you on June 28th to conduct a public hearing for the introduction of an ordinance establishing our jail booking fee rate for the 2223 fiscal year. As a quick recap, the proposed calculated fee is $150 per booking, which is a $15 increase from the previous year. The change is mainly due to increased building depreciation costs as a result of the final completion and capitalization of our jail construction projects. So as explained last meeting, we are currently not able to use this rate as current legislation prevents that. However, we must still calculate it each year in case the state eliminates our annual funding. If this would occur, we would be able to charge half of this rate to the cities for any bookings they bring into our jail. So with that, I can ask that you consider adopting this ordinance, establishing the booking fee rate for fiscal year 2022, 2023, and waive the reading.
Thank you, Rob. Questions, comments, concerns?
So moved, waived the reading.
Oh, you don't want me to read it?
Nope.
I didn't read it.
Moved by Fagundes, seconded by Peterson. Thank you very much. Additional questions, comments, or concerns? Hearing are none. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
Aye.
Doug Verboen.
Yes.
Craig Peterson.
Aye.
Richard Fagundes.
Yes. Let the record show that item stands approved, five in favor. Good luck, Rob. Thanks. The next two items come from the fire department. First item is to consider authorizing handguns, holsters, spare magazines. I don't see bullets on that list. Is there a purpose? No bullets. So, yeah. Oh, one bullet. Good morning. Thanks for being here.
Thank you. Aaron Pereira, Fire Marshal, Lead Investigator. So last year, the Sheriff's Department moved from 40-caliber handguns to 9mm. We do training with the Sheriff's Department. As far as the fire department, we do training with them. We do our skills assessments with them, as well as respond to emergency incidents with the Sheriff's Department. So we're just looking to do the same thing they did, which is switch from 40 to 9mm. We currently have five fire investigators that are police officers, and we have one more that's going through the training in September. So we're asking to purchase the six handguns along with the holsters. Another big reason is we share our, hey, you mentioned ammo. We share ammo with the Sheriff's Department. So if we're buying a separate caliber, the cost is pretty astronomical. So that's why we're asking to move over.
Thank you, Mr. Pereira. Questions, comments, or concerns about this item?
So moved. There are no questions. Moment.
Moved by Fagundes.
Second.
Seconded by Peterson. Thank you very much. Um, any final comments? Hearing are none. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
Aye.
Doug Verboen.
Yes.
Craig Peterson.
Aye.
Richard Fagundes.
Yes. Let the record show that item stands approved, five in favor. Thank you very much. The next item is a maintenance agreement with Oke's Towing and Truck Repair for Fire Department fleet maintenance.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. Bill Lynch, Kings County Fire Department. In 2009, the county fire department contracted with Oke's Towing and Truck Repair for repair and maintenance of our vehicle fleet. We continued that by releasing an RFP in 2014 to solicit bidders to actually perform that function. At that time, Oke's Towing and Truck Repair won that, that RFP process and was awarded a grant, or excuse me, awarded the contract to actually perform that maintenance. That, that contract has met its term. We went out the whole five years and did the two one-year extensions per the contract. So we're here today to let you know that we did do another RFP in May of this year. Oke's Truck Repair, or Towing and Truck Repair was the only vendor that actually presented a proposal to us. So we would like to retroactively request that your board approve the agreement with Oke's Towing and Truck Repair for the maintenance and repair of fire apparatus. A few things I'd just like to point out, in this new agreement, you'll see that the hourly rate changed from $75 to $100 an hour. That is a very industry-low number for truck repair. It's been $75 an hour since 2009, probably. One of the other things we did do is we put a multiplier in this year's counter, this proposal, to increase it by 5% each year in order to offset some of the crazy costs that are happening out there. And we did also increase their mileage rate from $1 per mile to $2 per mile, which, again, is an industry standard, a very low rate for us. The service that's provided by Oke's Truck Repair is invaluable to the fire department. We couldn't perform our mission without them. They have people that will actually come to our stations and repair engines, where we don't have to move them back and forth to Kettleman City. They work with other vendors to get our vehicles repaired and have done just an outstanding job as long as I've been in this agency. So I'd like to point out Mr. Phelan is in the audience today. That's how serious he takes this, this contract. And so I would respectfully request that you retroactively approve this agreement with Oke's Towing Truck Repair, retroactive back to July 1, 2022. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Very good. Thank you, Chief. Questions, comments?
Mr. Chairman. Yeah, well, one, I will make the motion approve as presented. And like the chief, I did want to thank Mr. Phelan for being here. He's always here when the contract is up. And so in the 15 years I've been here, I always see him. And a lot of people up for contracts take it for granted and don't actually show up here for larger amounts than this money. And so that's appreciated. No, he's a busy man.
Absolutely.
Taking in the drive from Kettleman. And for the other folks came in from Kettleman today, this morning, too. Thank you.
Absolutely. Supervisor Valley, Mr. Phelan takes it serious. He knows he's dealing with taxpayer's money, and he, he takes that very seriously, so.
Got a question?
Yes, sir.
And I'll second that.
I had a second from Fagundes. Moved by Valley, seconded by Fagundes. Additional questions, comments, or concerns? Hearing are seen none. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
Aye.
Doug Verboen.
Yes.
Craig Peterson.
Aye.
Richard Fagundes.
Yes. Let the record show that item stands approved, five in favor. Jimmy, any want to say anything? Yeah, appreciate you being here and appreciate you having a new pair of coveralls on, because I know most of the time, you've got a tough job out there. So thank you for coming on and taking time, and hopefully the chief will buy you lunch. Any other questions, comments? With that, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which comes from Human Resources. And Anthony, thank you very much for being here, talking about the classification of Assistant Assessor Clerk Recorder in the office. So good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Anthony Valdez, Personnel Analyst with the Human Resource Office. I'm here today regarding the new job classification in the Assessor Clerk Recorder's office. The Assessor Clerk Recorder's office included in their 2022, 2023 fiscal year budget, an Assistant Assessor Clerk Recorder position. The Assistant Assessor Clerk Recorder was deleted from their budget in 2017. However, due to the implementation of a new property system, there has been a significant increase in the need for supervision and review of staff's work. Additionally, the Assistant Assessor Clerk Recorder will assist the Assessor Clerk Recorder in planning, coordinating, and administration of all programs and divisions of the office, coordinate the preparation and administration of the department budget, interview, select, train, and evaluate the work of subordinates, and develop and oversee the implementation of policies and procedures for all divisions. The current annual cost for the new position is approximately $150,125, which includes salary and benefits. The funding for this position was included in the department's budget. HR recommends to set the salary at range 257.0. Additionally, all management personnel are receiving a 3% COLA effective yesterday, July 11, 2022, pay period 15. This position will receive the same increase, which will place it at range 260.0. Accordingly, HR recommends approval of the job classification for Assistant Assessor Clerk Recorder and set the salary range at 257.0. If you have any questions, I would be happy to address them.
Thank you, Anthony. Questions, comments, or concerns?
Question, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
The, as we know, the Assessor's office is an elected position. Will the, I would assume that the person for this position would report directly to the assessor, the chain of command?
Correct.
Okay. So that being said, with, again, with it being a political job, an elected job, when other assessors come in in the future, is, does that impact whoever gets this job? Is this job appointed by that elected official to serve under them, or does that person stay here, no matter who the assessor is?
Um, I'd have to confirm, but I believe that would stay, right?
Sorry, this position is an at-will position, so it will serve at the leisure of the Assessor Clerk Recorder.
Okay. So that means that if a new assessor were to get elected, then that new assessor could appoint, basically appoint this, who they want their assistant to be?
Potentially, yes.
Okay. And the current assessor has that freedom to do that right now as well?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Additional questions or comments?
I'll make the motion to approve as presented.
Moved by Verboen.
Second.
Seconded by Valley. Thank you very much. Further discussion? Hearing are seen none. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
Aye.
Doug Verboen.
Yes.
Craig Peterson.
Aye.
Richard Fagundes.
Yes. Let the record show that item stands approved, five in favor. Thank you, Anthony.
Thank you.
The next item, next two items come from Public Works. First item is to consider authorizing and sign the agreement with Mark Thomas to prepare roadway safety sign audit. Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Mitchell Cabrera with the Public Works Department. The first item before your board is a request to authorize Public Works Director to sign a consultant service agreement with Mark Thomas in order to prepare the roadway sign safety audit. This is a report that the scope composes of the main components being a, a LiDAR mobile scan survey of 326 centerline miles. The purpose of the report is to gather information on the sign conditions, locations, GPS coordinates, making sure the signs are in good condition, and also a curveball banking data collection for any curves within the county roadway network. And then this project is funded through the Highway Safety Improvement Program. Applications were submitted by the county, and the project awarded was the roadway sign safety audit. It's 100% funded through the HSEP. Mark Thomas was one of the firms to submit in the RFP process, and based off of their qualifications, they were selected to prepare this report. The total cost not to exceed for the contract is $784,000. The total cost not to exceed for the contract is $784,000 to prepare this report, GIS data figures and everything the county needs to have a full database on our roadway sign conditions. So if you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer those.
Good. Thank you, Mitch. Any questions, comments, or concerns about the sign audit?
Don't move.
Moved by Fagundes.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Seconded by Valley. Additional questions or concerns?
Yeah, it just seems like a little expensive to make the signs, or?
Yeah, so the reason it's that expensive, it's a full survey that collects GPS data images of 326 miles of county roads. They'll also go out and make sure-
Been done before?
The county has not done-
But this will be the first time.
Yeah.
Next time shouldn't be so expensive.
Yeah, so this will set the database in place for the county to use for future projects and references of our signs.
Thank you.
Yeah, there's quite a few hours involved in this process, and so it's not just doing the survey, it's building the map, doing all of the background equipment-
Yeah.
-and information. So there, there is a lot of, a big database that's-
And this is a new requirement from the state, correct?
It, it's not a new requirement. So far, as of now, our construction inspector has been the one to go out, do a nighttime survey.
Right.
They'll go out and check their reflectivity of the signs. And at that time, any signs that are in poor condition get reported to our Roads Department to replace. But this will formalize that whole, that whole survey and have it in place for us to continue on moving forward.
And we Charlie did that before.
Correct.
Every, every week, he'd go around, check the signs, but he didn't, he didn't get that kind of money.
That's a lot of money. It is a lot of money.
Yeah, but I, I understand the documentation is going to be important, so.
You want to cut this budget in half?
Please don't.
Rebecca, you have a question or comment? Make it quick.
One time.
Yeah, this will be a one time.
Ever, every time we expand, or is it every time?
So we were able to get this through the HSEP application. If time goes on and we feel we need to do it again, we could try to submit again for an HSEP project to get it. But this will set the foundation and then we'll keep doing our nighttime surveys on any additional roads that get added to make sure the signage required is in place and in good condition.
Survey, all fire, and you'll be four of them.
So this is only for 326 centerline miles, so the total county roadway network's over 900. So this is just a fraction of the whole county roadway.
Yeah. And, and then Mitchell, you'll be able to update as four-way stops are in, added and all of the other additions and changes.
Yeah.
Speed limit signs.
Roundabouts.
Roundabouts.
Roundabouts, four-way stops, all that will be added.
Yeah, so, but this, this will certainly bring, bring the database up to a more current and readable and usable format.
Miss Quick, question, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, go ahead.
Is, would this be the time to note, too, that especially like in the roundabouts for sections where landscape is part of the project, when the project was submitted, that there be some kind of beautification element to something like the roundabout? Will you be able to check, see if, one, that landscape is actually there, or two, that landscape needs good maintenance?
So I don't think any roundabouts are part of this scope, and it, it would be, it wouldn't be part of the scope that we've put together for this project.
All the round, all the roundabouts are state, state-owned organizations right now, aren't they?
Pretty much, yeah.
So I don't think there's any-
I ask that because I know when we approved, and it didn't come easy, but when we approved the Corcoran Roundabout, it was brought up at that time, there was going to be a beautification element to it, meaning some landscape in the center. And I've been getting some complaints from Corcoran residents that, that, that's not there, the middle of that roundabout.
You talk to their senator or assembly person for that?
Yeah, okay. And then, and then thank you to your guys' defense. I remember one time, had to be about six years ago, but I was on my way to Avonale, leaving the backroads of Corcoran, and I saw, in a country area, I saw a sign, one of our signs, and it had a racial word painted on it. And I called, called you guys, and by the time I got back from Avonale, that sign was either replaced or the spray paint was scrubbed off, you know, in a matter of a few hours. So appreciate you guys.
Thank you. The Roads Department does a real good job of staying up to date on any signs that get knocked down or that need replacing.
Yeah, good job.
Any, any other additional questions or comments? This item should be moved by Fagundes, seconded by Valley. And if there are no other discussion, will the clerk please call the roll?
Joe Nevs?
Yes.
Richard Valley?
Hi.
Doug Birboon?
Yes.
Craig Peterson?
Hi.
Richard Fagundes?
Yes. Let the record show that item stands approved, five in favor. Thank you very much. Mitchell, would you like to continue and talk about the agreement for asphalt overlays?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The second item before your board is approving the notice of completion for the fiscal year 2021 Senate Bill 1, SB 1-funded roadway project, which was the overlays. June 29 of last year, your board agreed to enter in with the agreement with Pappage Construction Company to overlay around 15 miles of county road and do some slurry seals. This project was completed May, end of May, early June of this year. Original contract cost was 2.9 million. With the two change orders that were approved, total project cost at the end of construction was 3.3, right under the funding amount of $3.4 million. Work was completed on the roadway segments. We had 11th Avenue, 10th Avenue, Excelsior, Houston, Fargo, and Lacy. And then within the Home Garden area, we did the slurry seals. So we would like to finalize this project by setting out the notice of completion. If you have any questions, happy to answer.
Thank you, Mitchell. Questions, comments, or concerns about this project?
Don't move.
Other than it's $214,000 a mile.
And they're, they're not quite done. They're finishing it up right now, right?
So this, this project is done?
Yeah.
Well, they haven't striped it yet. They drive through it every day, they have, they've got it chalked, but they have a stripe to get.
What portion?
Fargo and 12th?
Fargo and 12th, that would be the city. So the portion of Fargo that the county did on this project was 13th Avenue to 15,000. The crosswalks on 12th, I believe, is the city slurry job.
Yeah, yeah.
We're close to them, then. All right, I'll make them, I'll approve as presented again.
Uh, let's see, I have Fagundes moving, Birboon seconding. Additional questions or comments? Hearing are seen, none. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Joe Nevs?
Yes.
Richard Valley?
Hi.
Doug Birboon?
Yes.
Craig Peterson?
Hi.
Richard Fagundes?
Yes. Let the record show that item stands closed out. Thank you very much, Mitchell.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good job. Uh, next item comes from administration with two items. First item is to consider approving the appointment of somebody to the position of Director of Finance. Mr. Hill, you want to introduce the individual?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. On September 17, 2021, the Director of Finance, Mr. Jim Urb, retired, leaving a vacancy in this role. During the recruitment for this position, the county contracted with Mr. Urb to ensure critical services were provided during that time. Currently, the position is still vacant. Mr. Urb has indicated his desire, although it's unsure why, to return to full-time status. Mr. Urb-
Editorial comments, just keep digging in there.
Yeah. Mr. Urb has been a licensed certified public accountant since 1993 and has worked in the San Luis Obispo County Controller's Office since 1990. In 2013, he was appointed to the department head position until he was elected to the position of Auto Controller in 2014, where he served until he began his employment with the County of Kings as the Director of Finance. Today, we are seeking your board's approval of the appointment of Mr. Urb and, excuse me, as the Director of Finance, and setting his compensation at $13,180 per month of benefits. This concludes my report, and obviously, Mr. Urb is in the audience today if you'd like to grill him with any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Hill. Mr. Urb, thank you for joining us today.
Yeah, thank you. It's, it's going to be back. It's, you know, things have calmed down. It's, COVID's kind of passed, and I think you have a great administrative staff and county council and a good team, and so it's going to be, good to be a part of it. I retired. I, it took about a month and a half, and I said, you know, I'm kind of bored. And so here I am back. I understand that it's important to come up with a succession plan, and I have some ideas because obviously I'm not going to be around forever. And, and so I'm hoping to meet with each one of you individually and talk about some of my ideas and, and get your opinions or your, any suggestions that you have for moving forward with that. So I'd, I'd like to meet with all of you in the next, in the near future here. If you have any questions for me, I'm here to answer them.
Thank you. Any questions?
Mr. Chairman, I just want to know who's going to take, are you going to be able to take care of your chickens before you come to work? You know, I don't know. I, about four weeks ago, I fell off the back of my truck trying to unload hay, and I, I really hurt my leg, so I, I am getting older and, but I'll, I'll bring in some eggs for you guys. Well, Mr. Chairman, I'm, I'm supportive.
Hopefully not scrambled.
Yeah. I am supportive, Mr. Chairman, and I do want to thank Mr. Urb because I know this is, there's a hole in, in finance as to what we need right now. There's good people there. You, you do have good staff, but I think for all department heads, it's just a good opportunity to also mention that, you know, hopefully, we can always make sure there's somebody ready to step up. And I think our jobs as leaders is always to make sure there's somebody else, there's somebody else there ready to help out because as you mentioned, you never know what could happen. And I, I know it always feels good when we can appoint someone who's been loyal to the county, been working here 15 or 18 years, and then a department head opening pops up. That's always, that's always a good sign. I think it helps with morale for the employees, too. So that, that just goes out to all department heads at this opportunity, but thank you for stepping back up here. Okay? Thank you. Thanks for having me.
Well, we haven't had the vote yet. We only have one little obstacle.
I'm only one. Yesterday, you know, should, should we vote or should we let the chickens vote? You know, I'm, I'm-
Oh, yeah.
I'm so easy to pick on, and I'm not sure why, but it's happened all my life.
All the time? Even in San Luis Obispo?
Yeah, but that's because I usually get even to someone.
Yeah. For the record, I haven't said anything yet. Yet. Yeah, you noticed he said yet.
But with that, I'll make a motion to approve as presented.
Oh.
We'll come back.
I second that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Moved by Birboon, seconded by Valley. Thank you very much. Additional discussion? We could turn this into a roast after the vote. With no other questions or comments, will the clerk please call the roll?
Joe Nevs?
Yes.
Richard Valley?
Hi.
Doug Birboon?
Yes.
Craig Peterson?
Hi.
Richard Fagundes?
Yes.
I was like, somebody poke him.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Well, I'm thinking.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah. I didn't think he was asleep. I didn't hear him snore, but I was- Just double checking. That item stands approved, five in favor. Jim, congratulations. Welcome back. Yeah, you, since you got the raise yesterday, I guess it was kind of formal. Yeah, but the formally now, you don't have to give the money back. Okay, good. Good luck. Thanks. The second item coming from administration is to consider authorizing the use of American Rescue Plan Act funding. And, Mr. Hill, would you like to kick off the discussion?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Today, we are presenting the latest recommendations from the ARPA, excuse me, the ARPA Committee for your board's consideration. The state and local coronavirus fiscal recovery funds legislation, part of the American Rescue Plan Act, was signed into law by President Biden on March 11, 2021. The county has received a total of $29,706,802 directly from the U.S. Treasury, and as of today, the funds reside in a separate fund, so they don't fall into the general fund balance. Established shortly after the announcement of the awards, the county created an ARPA Committee who meets regularly to evaluate proposals for consideration by your board. Today, the committee is seeking your board's consideration for the following projects and allocations. $1 million for community service district operational and drought relief. This project will provide operational drought relief funding to community service districts that fall within the county's jurisdiction. The purpose of the project to address, excuse me, address their respective increased costs secondary to the logistical constraints resulting from the COVID-19 pandemic and the current drought. This will be accomplished by establishing a $1 million trust, which local CSDs can request relief funding from upon providing data supporting their identified burden in these respective areas. Funds used for this project cannot supplant funding for projects available from other sources, like the Department of Water Resources and the USDA. $500,000 for cemetery district operational relief. The project will provide relief funding to cemetery districts. The purpose of the project is to address respective increased costs secondary to inflationary constraints caused by the pandemic. This will be accomplished by providing eligible cemetery districts within one-time payment of up to $100,000. Funds used for this project also cannot be supplanted by other sources. $351,500 for the Kettleman City Foundation Family Resource Center revenue loss relief. The Kettleman City Foundation has served as a community hub since 1997. It's, it currently houses the Kettleman City Family Resource Center and Head Start and the Community Hall, and on Foundation campus, it is used for community event rentals, space to host public education forums, food distribution, a cooling center, food and pandemic-related relief goods and services, distribution site, and other events that benefit the entire community. One of the main sources of revenue which sustains this operation is the form of rental of the facility, which the facility was unable to do during the pandemic. However, the organization did continue to provide all community-needed services during the pandemic, and as mentioned earlier by our public comment, these funds are needed to also support other logistical and maintenance issues at that facility. On the next item, I need to call out a typo in the agenda item. It is missing a zero. The proposed value for this project is $500,000 for digital marketing for small business grant funds. This project would provide grant funding to local businesses with less than 100 employees. The purpose of the project is to provide local businesses with funds used to increase their digital marketing footprint, promoting their respective businesses. These funds can be used for website design, social media ads, professionally-produced videos for their websites, and print advertisements. The next item is $50,599 for computer equipment for the Assessor Clerk Recorder's Office. This project is a request for laptops that will make the office more efficient and better equipped to serve the public. This would give the Clerk Recorder employees the ability to work from home in cases of staff being, needing to quarantine. The laptops for the Assessor would also provide staff the ability to work in the field as the shift from digital media has occurred. It's become inefficient to use paper in the field. This would facilitate that. It would also provide for an upgraded computer to help address the GIS issues. These programs become very memory-intensive as the pro, or excuse me, as the programs continue enhancing their capabilities. And then, again, it would just reinforce that it would make the office a little bit And then again, it would just reinforce that it would make the office a little bit more user-friendly in accessing information. The last project for consideration is $38,175. Unfortunately, this is another typo in the board item as the incorrect value of $50,509 was included. This project is for Kings County Housing Authority in Corcoran. This project will provide relief funds for the Kings County Housing Authority in Corcoran. The purpose of the project is to replace failing and unserviceable fire hydrants within the housing authority area as part of the allowable projects within the American Rescue Plan Act. Infrastructure impacts, this funding will protect the municipal water source used by the residents as well as provide for fire suppression should that occur.
You said that was $50,000?
I'm sorry?
You said it correctly. It's $50,000?
The correct value is $38,175.
Okay.
All of these projects have been approved by the ARPA Committee. And the total of the proposed six projects is $2,444,000, or excuse me, $440,274. If approved, this would leave a balance of $11,678,702 for future projects. As a reminder, ARPA funds must be obligated by December 31 of 2024 and completely expended by December 31, 2026. This concludes my report. I'm happy to answer any questions. Additionally, departments who submitted projects are also available in the audience for questions.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Hill. Questions, comments, or concerns?
So I brought up last time about putting in five or six million for the businesses that were shut down by COVID. Did that go to the board discussion?
It was my understanding from that discussion that your board would have that discussion today. The ARPA Committee did not meet after that recommendation. Mr. Lance Lippincott is standing in the back of the audience as well. It's my understanding your board was considering beefing up the already existing program and augmenting that dollar value.
Yeah, I would like to put, you know, $6 million into that account and do like we did back two years ago and reopen that up for the businesses that were shut down by COVID. And that would apply, I think, we're going to expand the amount of people that were employed to make it a bigger spectrum. But I don't know if I need to vote a couple notches from the board if that's okay to look into that and bring that to the ARPA Committee, if it's okay.
Mr. Chairman? Mr. Chairman, one, I'm glad Sue Verboon brought that up. Thanks for bringing it up because, you know, even as we heard today, some people feel that the pandemic is over. And I don't know if that's actually correct to say with the surges that have taken place and current surges, but I think the way we think about it is different. And I'm not saying that's a bad thing, but we definitely don't want to forget about small businesses. And I'm glad that you're showing that you haven't. And I think before I go on, I want to say that I would look at to see that we take action today because, as Mr. Hill pointed out correctly, that we appreciate the ARPA Committee. They did a good job here, bringing us good information, good projects. But it is for us today. It is for us today. And I would be in support of the 6 million for two reasons. One, the obvious, which is the loss of revenue. We know small businesses are still hurting. They're trying to dig their way out of the hole created by the pandemic. But what a lot of people still don't understand is, man, can you imagine being a small business owner, the exhaustion of the stress, their mental health issues right now from the stress of what they're going through, having life savings put on the line on their businesses. You as a business owner, I know you can speak better to that than me, but they've also dealt with things looking better. And then Omicron hit. And then that hit them again with that surge. And some argue we're in another surge right now with these new variants. How's that going to hit them? You got the great resignation, the loss of the workforce. It's, that's a lot of stress for them, not to mention the restaurants, right, that deliver food and with the price of the increase in gas. And I can't imagine what that does to their budgets that are hurting already when they're trying to pay employees, find employees to deliver food, but then pay them to go deliver on top of the higher fuel costs. And so I would be extremely supportive of 6 million and look to Mr. Lippincott and his staff, who, by the way, did a great job two years ago with 6 million in getting the application, the word out. But to understand that he's also revamping the application, making it more attractive, making it just a little bit easier for employers and small businesses to feel free to come and fill this out. And I think it's an overall win. And again, I appreciate your leadership to bring that up today. And you have my support on that.
I spoke to Lance last week briefly about it. And, you know, some of the people just can't get back on top after being shut down, even though it was for a four to six-week period. They never regained the clientele coming back in. They just got to get that one step over the edge and not over the edge where they fall in, but over the edge to continue on. So I think it's important to at least look into it and have Lance bring it to the ARPA Committee.
I think you can make the motion today, Sue.
Or let's make the motion ahead.
Sue, would you be looking at the same model as far as like the $20,000 grants for the $10,000 grant?
I think it's the same model except for we're going to expand the amount of employees that the person has, right? We're going to up it a little bit from 20 to 25 or 20 to 30 or?
Yeah, we would seek to expand it into the, from the unincorporated areas specifically into the incorporated areas as well to hit those small businesses. We pitched it at, and it was approved at 50 FTEs or less. We would seek to move that up to about 100 FTEs or less because you're talking about a much bigger pool of funding that could be accessed based on a limited set of firms that are available in Kings County. That would be the proposal if additional funding was sent to this program in order for us to get it out to those that it would target more specifically.
Now, back it up a little bit on what we're going to vote on today. Earlier, the $500,000 for digital marketing, that goes for you guys?
No, and actually, that's an admin project, one that's very supported by the EDC and JTO because it is a huge, huge benefit to local businesses.
So I think, you know, if we come across someone that says, well, you know, I can't get business to get back up, maybe they don't qualify for the funding, but they qualify for the digital marketing to, you know, get their name out there.
It's, they're very symbiotic. It's nice to be able to pitch multiple programs to these businesses because one size, not every business needs money. Some need to figure out how the heck they can get exposure out there. I mean, we had a massive amount of small businesses open post-COVID simply because there was vacancies and availability and everything else. Our part is, especially boutique businesses, smaller businesses, how do you get the word out there? They're not a Target. They're not a Walmart where national brand recognition is there. So this $500,000 is actually a huge benefit to a lot of these smaller businesses.
Yeah, I just want to make sure we don't give money to someone that's actually benefited from COVID.
So, and that's kind of the hard part with these programs is that there are some businesses that did very well during COVID. And a lot of, I was talking with Supervisor Valley a little bit about the application. And we want to bring it down as simple as possible. But we do have to have some restrictions in there to make sure that the money's actually getting used by those entities that actually need it, not those entities that did really well during COVID, but maybe they figured out how to work their taxes in order to apply.
Right.
That's not to say abuses don't happen. As we've seen on every program, abuses are out there. No program is perfect. But this way, we're balancing it between simplicity and compliance to make sure that the county stays protected.
I like, I like what you did with, it wasn't just someone filling out the application, hey, give me $20,000, please. You did a review, you did a step-two audit on it, and then you called them in and you sat down and you interviewed them in person before giving them a check. After the interview, we're going to go over this interview one more time and then we'll call you one to pick up a check. So one, thank you for that speak on that. But two, while we have folks from around the district here, especially Kettleman, I want you guys to know that the first project we did last year, we start off with 5 million, then Sue Verboon took it to 6 million. But even at 5 million, where it averaged out to a million-dollar investment in each district, it was hard, especially in Kettleman and Avenal. Mr. Lippincott came to me a few weeks into the program and he said, hey, look, I know you're looking to see a million dollars. Get to your district. As of right now, if everyone who applied got the 20,000, it would only be about 450,000. So he got some, worked with some Spanish folks, upped up the flyer, and they went door-to-door in the Avenal community and in the Kettleman community. So I know we have leaders from Kettleman here today, and we would need your help to get the, this gets approved, to get the word out to those, especially Spanish-speaking business owners, to let them know this is an opportunity right here to provide, bring some badly needed help here. So thank you.
We had one in my district that she spoke Spanish. And she said, I don't read English. I can't do it. And so Lance's staff came to her site and took care of her. But then she had to step away from the business because she couldn't handle it no more. So she had to sell her business to somebody else that could do it. So, yeah, we need to protect the businesses because they protect us. When they're doing good, we're doing good, and we feed off them. So I want to make sure we don't lose track of that.
Yes.
And so if I wanted today, anybody else want to speak on it, I'll make a motion to, you want to vote on the first one first or do?
It's my opinion, you can take this as one motion because it's the ARPA funding.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the item as presented with additional 6 million back to the small business grant program through Economic Development Department.
So would be, I'd second that, Mr. Chair. And then, so we'd be approving all 2.6 million roughly with six more million on there. So about an $8.6 million approval today, right?
The value is 2.4, so it would be 8.4 if that motion passes.
Additional questions or comments?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I know I've spoken on this last time. And I just, I can't support this today. You know, I guess my conservative nature, when you look at the financial conditions in the world today, I think there's a big, there's a big wave coming at us. And we have until 2024 to expend this money. I think a number of businesses have recovered or in the process of recovering and adjusting to this environment. But clearly, there is a wave coming and a redemption that's going to occur with, you know, not all, just about local issues, but the federal funding that's been expended. You look at the condition of our government. You know, our core purpose here is to provide services. And I'm concerned that, you know, in the next couple of years, we're going to be very challenged to do that. You look at the cost of services just here at the county. We have increased salaries. We've always been able to carry through, you know, in the last recession because we were smart with our money. We held money back to make sure that, you know, we could get through tough times. And I'm just, you know, I'm not going to be here for the full implementation of what's coming our way. But I do have a concern. And I, you know, I want to support the committee's recommendations, but the $6 million, I just can't support today. And so with that, I would probably be opposed to this.
Sue Peterson, would you be more comfortable if we took Sue Verboon's motion separately and then that to allow you to vote on the ARPA Committee's?
If you make her the motion is agreeable, I would.
He's not invited lunch.
Well, you know, Mr. Chairman, if I might.
Where are you going?
Mr. Chairman, if I might comment. When I, I appreciate Sue Peterson's, I mean, nothing's different about what he said. He has been very fiscally conservative during his career here. And we're a balanced board. Some of us mix priorities at the counties with priorities to our communities. And Sue Peterson is always focused on the duty we have here, too, to make sure that the county runs. But my only response would be to that, that I was here during the last economic downfall we had. We did survive it for a number of reasons. Kings County's always been very fiscally conservative even before I was seated in 2008. And I think we've been more fiscally conservative since then. We've added on to to our backup accounts, the emergency funds that aren't even included in the budget, the monies we have for rainy days. And that money's there. And so we survived it without these funds. And so my only comments or response would be that these funds we have here are due to the pandemic. We wouldn't have them if COVID didn't hit the world and didn't hit Kings County like the way it did. And this money is to mitigate the negative impacts of the pandemic. And I think that we have the rainy day fund, but if you ask small businesses, I think that they'll say that it's not only raining, it's storming right now, and they are hurting. It's hard for them to climb out of, as Sue Verboon mentioned, the blows they took during the pandemic. And so I would say, let's, I would ask Mr. Chairman that we take this up separately and see if we have the support to move forward on the 6 million.
And I agree with Sue Peterson as well. But on the same hand, we're going to give $350,000 to the Family Resource Center in Kettleman, which that amount of money would cover 17 and a half businesses. So it's the same idea. We're taking those, take care of those who are struggling at this time. For lack of whatever reason, you know, say the Family Resource Center, you know, no one went to the facility for two years. The seals dried up, the roof started sinking in a little bit. So I think it's the same thing. I will change my motion to do in two separate votes. We'll vote on the first one first, which would be the American Rescue Plan Act that's presented first, and then I'll make another motion for the 6 million.
And I'll second the motion to take up the 2.4 million per committee recommendation.
Sean, you okay with that?
I do have a concern just because the amount of money that Supervisor Verboon and Supervisor Valley are suggesting adding on for a separate motion, I do believe there has to be a, some type of emergency or other type of urgency that was not known when the agenda was originally posted. And that would have to be.
We.
We'll just leave the first motion as is.
Correct. And then we're going to bring the other one back.
Yep.
Well.
No, I'll just leave it the first one. I'll put my project in with this project here and we'll vote on it. We already got a proposal in the second.
I think Sean's trying to make the point that it's not.
We can't do it. You can't add it to because it's too much.
I would, I would only say this, that three years ago, two years ago, when the board did it, the day on the agenda, it was presented, $2 million only, right? And we upped it to 5 million on the spot. And so the board is.
And we need a new attorney?
I'm saying I would ask him to reconsider his legal advice counsel to us because I think the board has the authority to up anything today. Any of these items could be taken down or upped. And so there's, not only there's small business grant funds on the agenda under digital marketing, I don't see what would stop any board member from adding 6 million with a different description to that. But also Sue Verboon has been very vocal that this was going to come today. And I think we need to be prepared. We were told today was good to go. Sue has made motions, taken up time to present, and I think he's, respectfully, should be allowed to vote today.
And I'm just double checking to make sure that I'm correct on this, but.
Always apologize.
We have any other lawyers in the audience tonight?
We have Diane Freeman is online.
Oh, okay.
I don't know if she wants to chime in.
Yeah. Hello, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
I guess my, my primary concern is that the 6 million does fall outside of the agenda as it was noticed. I would note that the recommendation was to approve funding as recommended by the ARPA Committee. So to go beyond that, unless it's been recommended by the ARPA Committee, would technically be beyond the, the scope of the agenda item. And I think the most conservative approach would be to bring it back for further consideration, whether that be next week or the week thereafter. I mean, the extra 6 million back for further consideration after it's been properly noticed. And that would allow for the comment. I'm not sure if the public was aware that $6 million of ARPA funds would be considered for this proposed use based on the agenda.
Okay, so I'm okay with that. And it should go to our committee anyways. If we can take the 6 million back to our committee and they can bring it back to us in a week or two.
Mr. Hill, you okay with that?
Yeah, if it pleases your board, we can quickly hold a quick ARPA committee meeting and bring it back to your board next Tuesday.
And I'll make a motion to approve the American Rescue Plan as presented for today.
And I'll second. I also want to thank, I just noticed Ms. Jeanette Todd in the audience. I believe you're here representing the Corcoran District Cemetery and appreciate you being here. Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, ma'am.
Very good. Sean, you got it straight now?
And thank you, Diane, for clarifying. I was trying to phrase how I wanted to say that. But I think Diane said it well.
Very good.
This is Diane again. I would just say that you're free to move forward with the proposal with the $2,440,274. If you want to move forward with that resolution today, it's only the 6,000 that I believe goes beyond the scope of the notice provided to the public.
6 million. There's only a few more zeros added to that. And they are just zeros, but it does make a significant change.
With that, the motion has been for the $2.4 million moved by Verboon, seconded by Valley after much discussion. And is there any final comments? Karen, you're seeing none. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Joe Nevs?
Yes.
Richard Valley?
Aye.
Doug Verboon?
Yes.
Craig Peterson?
Aye.
Richard Fagundes?
Yes. But the record showed that item stands in favor, five in favor. So those funds will move forward with an additional action to take place at a later date.
Thank you.
With that, thank you very much for that discussion. We'll move on to the final item of the morning, and that comes from Public Health. And that will give a update on the COVID-19 or the viruses. And Rosemary.
Hello. Good morning, Chairman Supervisors Rosemary Rand, Department of Public Health. I'm here to give you a COVID update. The total number of COVID cases for last week was 543. And if you recall, the week prior when I reported in June was 514. The majority of cases are the Omicron BA1 and 2, although the BA4 and BA5 subvariants are counting for about 20%. And those are the numbers. And that variant is one you're hearing about in the news currently. BA4 and 5 are also contributing to the reinfections even among people with earlier Omicron variant infections. Kings County remains in the high orange classification for community transmission this week, according to the CDC. And most counties in the San Joaquin Valley are in the high transmission area. Hospitalized cases have increased since the last report in June. Current hospitalizations here in Hanford are 18, eight which are Kings County residents. And if you'll recall, there were five Kings County residents in June hospitalized. None are in the ICU, though. Our average daily patient average is 6.6. Testing continues in the county at various locations and also at the Public Health Department. Last week, there were a total of 793 tests with a total of 2,706 in the county. We continue to hand out rapid antigen test kits to residents, businesses, and various agencies. Over the last week for vaccinations, there were 380 vaccines given in Kings County. Residents can get vaccinated or boosted at health department, local pharmacies, and several pop-up clinics around the county. And the current schedule is on our website. We're providing vaccinations now to six-month to five-year-olds, which has accounted for a small bump up in vaccinations. Take-home messages, as always, we would like to remind everyone to stay home when you're sick, get tested of experiencing COVID-like symptoms, and get vaccinated and are boosted if you have not yet. Masks continue to provide protection, and we strongly recommend wearing them in crowded settings. And masks are still required in healthcare settings. We'd also We'd also like to explore the consideration of the board for an adjustment to the frequency of the update we provide, um, by the Kings County Department of Public Health related to the COVID-19 emergency, either to a biweekly, once a month, or as needed via health alert or every week, however your board seems necessary. And I'm available for any questions.
Good, appreciate it. Thank you very much. Questions?
Two que- uh, first, a question, but, um, but first, I would turn it back over to you. And all due respect, as our Public Health Director, you, um, look to you to take the lead on as the pandemic goes. What would be your recommendation? You want to be here once a week or every other week?
I would say every other week. Right now, the cases are a little higher. I mean, I could go to once a month with a public comment if there was something really urgent. Right now, it seems to be level, but I would say either every other week or once a month would probably be adequate.
So that'd be for the board to decide today. But, uh, the only question I have, with everything changing, um, what, what would you tell the, uh, public as far as, um, most of the pandemic, we were told, hey, if we got sick or we test positive, stay home, don't go to the emergency room unless you're having trouble breathing. But now, has it changed to where if you, if you're sick, you take your test at home, you know you have it? Should you go, um, to your doctor now because there's medicines out?
Right, so if you do test positive, we would say test, contact your doctor or even the pharmacy because there's therapeutics.
Okay.
You know, antivirals that you can get started on. If you test at like a pharmacy, they'll provide you the therapeutics or the antivirals. So yeah, I would say call your doctor, probably not go to the emergency room. We're notice, we're still having cases. I mean, all of us probably know someone that's been infected. Stay home until you have a negative test and then you can return.
Would you recommend going to get those, um,
Antivirals.
Those medicines, um, than riding it out like most of us did?
Um, you know, I would. I would say if you're at risk for, um, disease, you know, age, um, immunocompromised, diabetic, certain health conditions, I would definitely say go get the antivirals. But it, there's enough of them for anybody. So if you really want to nip it in the bud and feel better soon, I would recommend it.
Load up tractor supply and get your ivermectin.
That I cannot recommend.
Okay, so I guess we got to decide, Mr. Chairman, right?
And, and especially with the hot weather, um, someone that's in a fever, uh, situation, uh, dehydration becomes an issue.
Yeah.
Some of the other, um, you know, keep them, uh, totally hydrated, uh, is very important, especially on 110-degree days. So any other questions, comments or concerns? What about the, uh, school is about a month away from opening again? Are part of the school vaccinations, uh, have they added the, um?
So it's a good point. They, we are getting some, uh, extra push from the state and from the schools. The schools are also getting funding that will start doing some targeted outreach to the schools for vaccinations and boosters. That should be happening mid to late July, but definitely in August. And the schools are on board too with wanting to provide vaccinations for the kids. They have not said if they're going to require vaccination, return to school. And I think that's a sensitive issue usually, but, but I think they are really encouraging children to be vaccinated before returning.
With that, any other additional questions or comments? And then the frequency, you, you want to put it on there every other week or?
Every other week would be fine.
I'm fine with every other week.
Okay, yeah.
Great, thank you.
You okay with that?
I'm good with every.
Unless you have a.
Unless there's some urgent issue, obviously. Um, one other note, just on orthopox or monkeypox. We did get 20 vaccines that have been distributed to our county. The case numbers in California, I just wanted to let you know on that, is, um, 141 probable confirmed cases in California, none in Kings County thus far. And the probability is very low. But they did provide vaccines in case of people who might get exposed to lab specimens or providers or anyone with an exposure.
Don't hang around with the monkey.
That's just a sideline thing. It's not in the same category, but.
Yeah. All right, with that, uh, there are no other questions or comments? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. That concludes all of the, um, agenda items on today's agenda. We'll now move on to board member announcements or reports. On their own initiative, board members can make brief announcements or reports on their own activities. Supervisor Fagundes.
I was down in Santa Barbara this last week for my regular checkup. And you don't understand why I'm still here, but I'm here.
You are?
Yeah. So that was good news. Went back to the coast, watched 4th of July fireworks and got sore throat and here I am.
Well, welcome back. Uh, thank you for being the ambassador to, uh, Pismo Beach and, uh, thank you for doing that.
Carried the Portuguese flag all around town.
Yeah, so good. Thank you for doing that. Appreciate it. Supervisor Valley.
Uh, yes, uh, Mr. Chairman, I want to thank some member, Salos, and just report out that in state budget, he was able to help us out with 1.5 million, uh, to the Kings County, um, Fire Department, which I understand is enough to purchase, uh, uh, two vehicles, two more, um, uh, fire safety units and another 2 million, uh, to the Lamoir Volunteer, uh, Fire Department, which, uh, I hope that helps them out tremendously. But I also want to thank him, um, for another $2 million for the Kettlemann City, uh, Pedestrian Bridge. Um, add that to the 2 million that, uh, uh, he helped us with, uh, in last year's state budget. So we now have 4 million for the Kettlemann City Pedestrian Bridge. Um, so, uh, the community and the kids could cross Highway 41 safely. And, um, and, and last, I checked last week, that's still about a $7 million, uh, project. And so if we have four, um, uh, we're more than halfway there. I want to thank the board for their, uh, past support on that. They approved, um, some moving forward a couple of weeks ago. Um, but as Kettlemann is here, I want you to know, please, um, don't take that for granted because to get to the bridge is not easy. And, um, and matter of fact, uh, there's a, a grand jury report that came out, uh, last Friday. I believe it's a public report because it's already hit our email systems. And, um, that grand jury report says, don't spend the money out in Kettlemann City and to spend that money in other parts of the county. And, uh, if you read it, to me, it comes across as very disrespectful, um, to the community, um, who's been very vocal. It comes off disrespectful from the fact that they put in the report that you, that you won't use it, that you won't take the extra steps to go up the bridge and cross the bridge, that you'll just run across the freeway. And so I don't know where they get that from, but, um, I don't appreciate it. And I look forward to, uh, the county's response to, um, to that report. And, um, uh, let's stick together as a community and, and, and keep moving forward. Because again, things like this don't come easy. And so I look forward to the day that, uh, uh, we could get there. It'd be a beautiful day that we could break ground on that bridge and even beautiful day when we could all cross over that bridge, um, together, okay? So stay vigilant and thank you to the staff who's been working on that. Appreciate Dominic, uh, in, in all his efforts, Mr. Kenny. Thank you too for always weighing in, uh, and again, the board supervisors. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Verboon.
Uh, last week, Supervisor Nevs and myself toured the Faraday Future Plant, got updated on what their activities are. I don't believe we could say anything, uh, but we were there. And then I, we also went to, uh, the birthday party for the, the more naval station, 50 years, 60 years, I believe, and, uh, saw their activities as well. And then had an emergency meeting of the San Joaquin Valley JPA for the Amtrak San Joaquin's to have our upcoming meeting this week. That's it.
Very good. Thank you. Supervisor Peters.
Yep, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Uh, pretty simple, just, uh, again, uh, hope everyone enjoyed Independence Day. For me, it was the, uh, I also share that day, uh, with our, the birth of our triplets. It's the first time in 23 years that, um, we weren't together, uh, for that day and, and. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Not as big as one we had though. But, um, but, uh, just hope everyone, uh, is doing well and, and enjoy the family and, and, uh, time with family. So that's it.
Good, thank you. Uh, for me, the Kings Waste and Recycling held their meeting, uh, who accepted the annual audit and, and, uh, adopted the 22, 23, uh, budget, uh, with increased fees for the roll-off, uh, operation as well as the tires, which we have seemed to be getting, uh, more tires and more, uh, requests for roll-off bins. Um, so that, uh, moved forward. Attended the Outbutsman, uh, luncheon in Fresno, uh, recognizing the two areas, uh, that, uh, bring up, uh, Kings to Larry and, uh, Fresno, Madera Counties. Uh, very nice, uh, event up there and, and acknowledging those volunteers as they, uh, continue to work through, um, senior issues. Uh, Lamoir Raceway action on, uh, July 2nd, uh, was a beautiful night. Uh, it was another points race. It allowed cars and riders to, uh, drivers to, uh, compete on that season and certainly thank them for that. Uh, participated in the Lamoir 4th of July Walk Run. There were about 60 participants and, uh, um, for a July 4th morning, it was a very nice morning, uh, to have that kind of an event. Uh, South Fork Kings GSA had a, a finance committee meeting where we discussed, continue to discuss the 22, 23 budget coming up and some, uh, operational adjustments. We do continue to believe that we will have the amended, uh, plan to be able to submit on July 27th. We're going to have a meeting next week, July 21st, in order to do the final adjustments and hopefully it'll be ready to go. And then, uh, I want to thank, uh, Chief for, uh, allowing me to participate in the Kings County Local Hazardous Mitigation Plan, uh, going over all the proposals. And that will be coming to this board at a later date as well. So with that concludes my activities. Uh, Mr. Hill, do you have any, uh, uh, information on board correspondence, upcoming events or future agenda items?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. For board correspondence, your board received the Kettlemann City Pedestrian Bridge follow-up report dated June 7th, 2022, from the Kings County Grand Jury. Your board also received information regarding the Ukraine Family Relief Fund and Charity Golf Tournament that will be taking place at the Kings County Country Club on August 1st, 2022 at 9:00 AM. As mentioned, there are still teams needed and sponsorship opportunities. For, for more information, please contact Gerald Mercer at 559-852-1664. Your board submitted a floor alert correspondence dated June 30th, 2022 regarding its opposition to AB 205 and SB 122. Both bills respectively, uh, challenged the locals authority on solar panels and, uh, solar farms. Uh, it's basically trying to take away the county's authority to permit those facilities, giving it directly to the state. For upcoming events, the Kings County Library is hosting a free in-person show of Winston the Magician on Thursday, July 14th at 10:00 AM at the Hanford Civic Auditorium. West Hills College in Lamoir is hosting a live Reg Fest for Fall 2022 Enrollment on July 15th, 2022, from 1:00 PM to 5:00 PM at the Student Union. Uh, new and continuing students are welcomed. Uh, there will be a counseling information regarding financial aid and admissions. No appointment is needed and there will be food provided for the first 100 students. For more information, contact 559-925-3000. The City of Hanford is hosting a Movies in the Park on July 15th. Admission is free. Disney Soul will be the, shown at the event. Uh, the, the movie will begin at dusk and, uh, the event will be held at Hidden Valley Park. The City of Hanford is also hosting a dive-in theater, Hanford Plunge, on July 24th at 7:30 PM. The movie will be The Addams Family 2. Movie begins at dusk and the cost is $3 per person. Call 559-585-2525 for more information. Hanford Multicultural Theater Company is hosting a one-week summer workshop for improv and acting classes for kids, 11 to 15 years of age. The workshop is from July 25th to the 29th, from 9:00 AM to noon at 14060 Hackett Street in Hanford. You can sign up at hanfordmtc.com. The annual fee for entry family registration is $25. There will be a public safety appreciation luncheon hosted by the Greater Kings County Chamber of Commerce and the Hanford Chamber of Commerce on August 10th at the Hanford Civic Auditorium located at 400 North Dowdy Street in Hanford. The event will take place at 12:00 PM and tickets are $20 each. Tickets can be purchased on Eventbrite or through the website at hanfordchamber.com. For upcoming agenda items, administration has four items. Consideration for approval for the issuance of tax-exempt bonds. Consideration for a resolution continuing to declare a local emergency due to drought conditions in Kings County. Chemical waste quarterly update, uh, regional transportation plan and substantial community strategy. Behavioral Health has one item for consideration regarding approval of Second Amendment with an agreement with West Care California Incorporated for sub-program services. Finance has one item for consideration regarding the pre-funding of the 2022, excuse me, 23 CalPERS unfunded accrued liability contributions. HSA has two items. One is in conjunction with Behavioral Health and Probation Department regarding consideration for an approval of a AB 2083 MOU for implementation of an integrated system of care and consideration for an approval of an agreement with the county, excuse me, community-based organization to provide Medi-Cal and CalFresh applications and retention services. Health has two items for considerations, uh, for appointments to the Kings County Ambulance Commission. And I guess not two items because no COVID update and will we move those to biweekly? Probation has one item for consideration to approve an MOU between Probation Department and JTO to provide rehabilitative services for PRCS community supervision. Public Works has one item for consideration to approve an agreement regarding the Kings County Sheriff Posse Special Event Request. And Sheriff has one item for consideration regarding authorization of firearm purchases. That concludes our report. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Hill. Any questions or comments for Mr. Hill on the upcoming events? Chair, you're seeing none. Uh, we'll move on to closed session. We have two closed session items. First item is to take up a personnel item, uh, public employee appointment, uh, regarding the Human Resources Director and as well as conference with labor negotiator, uh, dealing with the nine units, uh, on, on, uh, the Kings County campus. So I want to thank you, uh, for that. Um, I do want to bring your attention to, uh, July 18th, which is a Monday, 9:00 AM for the, uh, Annual Board of Equalization Regular Meeting that will take place on Monday. And then the next regular scheduled meeting for the Board of Supervisors will be on Tuesday, July 19th at 9:00 AM. I also want to thank and acknowledge, uh, Bill Shawhan for being here. He's been a longtime fixture of Kings County and I want to thank him for his, uh, attendance and, um, all of his input. So with that, if there are no other questions or comments, we will move to closed session, adjourn out of closed session and we hope to see you next week. It is hot outside. Stay cool. Drink plenty of water. Talk to you later. Thanks.